We are pleased to call this February 10th meeting of the Tallahassee City Commission to order. For those of you who are willing and able, please stand for the invocation followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Most loving Heavenly Father, our hearts are heavy due to the recent loss of Miss Susan Fink. We ask that you continue to surround the Ziffer family and friends with peace and comfort during this difficult time. As we move forward with our meeting this afternoon, give us wisdom and understanding in the decisions facing us today, that we may provide excellent services and facilities to support a high quality of life for our community. In your name we pray, amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. Mr. City Manager, are there any agenda modifications?
Yes, sir, we have a few. One item has been rescheduled for February 24, 16. That's item 13.04. There are three additions to today's agenda. Number one is the presentation of proclamation for American Red Cross and Home Fire Campaign Month. The second is the South Monroe Street Corridor EPA Brownfields Designation Public Meeting and Public Hearing Announcement. And the third one is the authorization to apply for a U.S. Department of Labor Tech Hire Grant. This one replacement item, that's item 1201, is the introduction of ordinance number 16003 to correct the number.
Great, thank you, sir. Hey, it's my pleasure to present this proclamation. I want to invite forward those representatives from the American Red Cross, please. Leave Sharon Taylor, Joanne Suggs Adams. Congratulations, haven't seen you since. Ed Wood, and I don't know if, okay, all right, well, if they make it, they can feel free to come join us. And the proclamation reads, "Whereas March is American Red Cross Month, a special time to recognize and thank our heroes, those who volunteer, donate blood, take lifesaving courses to provide financial donations to support an organization whose mission is to help those in need. And whereas in the Capital, in the Capital Area Chapter, the Red Cross works tirelessly through its staff and more than 400 volunteers to help when disasters strike. Extending a hand of help and hugs of hope, it serves as the first responder to our first responders, providing them with the hydration and the nutrition at critical times. It provides 24-hour support to members of the military, veterans, and their families, and provides training in CPR, aquatic safety, and first aid. And whereas across the country, the American Red Cross responds to nearly 70,000 disasters a year." Amazing. "It provides some 400,000 services to military members, veterans, and civilians, collects and distributes more than 40% of the nation's blood supply, and trains more than 7 million people in first aid, water safety, and other lifesaving skills every single year. And whereas our community depends on the American Red Cross, which relies on donations of time, money, and blood to fulfill its humanitarian mission. Despite these challenging economic times, the American Red Cross continues to offer help and comfort to all those in need. And whereas our local Red Cross responds to nearly 160 disasters each year, with the vast majority being home fires. Studies show that smoke alarms cut the risk of death from a fire in half. So, the American Red Cross launched a home fire preparedness campaign to go door-to-door, helping families develop their first, their fire safety plan and installing and testing smoke alarms in neighborhoods across the country for free, with the goal of reducing the number of fire deaths and injuries in the United States by 25% over the next five years. In the last 15 months, our Capital Area Chapter has installed more than 1,400 free smoke alarms and provided lifesaving information to each of those families. Now therefore, I, Andrew Gillum, by the authority vested in me, do hereby proclaim and recognize the month of March as American Red Cross Safety Month. And I want to congratulate you all for the amazing work that you do on behalf of this community. In large part, you all are the folks who provide hope and inspiration to families who are in their times of need at their weakest. And so, on behalf of the City of Tallahassee and the City Commission, I want to acknowledge you all in advance, and of course, appreciate you for your work and offer you the opportunity to speak. Please welcome them as they come."
Keep this short and sweet. Thank you, and thank you each Commissioner and Mayor. It's a pretty honor to be here and be able to speak for you and be able to actually, for me to be able to work with Red Cross. Being a part of the world's largest humanitarian organization is a, is a pretty neat thing to be able to do and to be able to represent them, and as, as Andrew said, to be able to extend that hand of hope and, I mean, hand of help and hug of hope when people are at their darkest hour, when they've lost either most of their things or some, and sometimes lost everything. And so, we're excited to be able to do this, the fire safety thing. We've got many campaigns canvases coming up. Our next one here in Leon County in Tallahassee is April 23rd. We invite any and everybody to come join us. We will be doing around Sable Palm, that whole area there and canvassing that area. We've actually, in here in Tallahassee, we've done many homes in the 03 and the 01 area codes, because those are where most of our fires are. And so, we've really tried to go to the places that have the least amount of resources to be able to, to help those families. So, thank you for your support, and come volunteer, come donate. We welcome it all.
Right. We are now at the portion of the meeting to hear comments from citizens on items that are scheduled on the agenda. Mr. Treasurer Clerk, are there any speakers?
Mayor, there are not. I have one speaker, but he's on an un-agenda topic, so he'll come at the end of the meeting, but I have no speakers on, items on the agenda.
Absolutely. Mr. Manager has a quick announcement, son of the announcement section? Sorry about that?
Yes, sir. Mayor, Commissioners, as you will recall, on October 28, 2015, you authorized staff to begin the process of designating a portion of South Monroe Street a state brownfields area. This designation will not only enable property owners to take advantage of the many incentives offered by the state and federal government, but it also supports the city's overall South Side initiatives. As part of this designation, and under the Brownfield Redevelopment Act, the city is required to hold one public meeting and two public hearings. I wanted to take this opportunity to announce that the public meeting will be held on February 23, 2016, at Career Source, located at 2525 South Monroe Street in Suite 3A, from 5:30 to 7 o'clock in the evening. Public hearings will be held here in the City Commission chambers on March 23, 2016, and April 27, 2016, at approximately 6:00 PM. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. There's a motion and a second on consent. All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, no. Motion passes unanimously. Commissioners, we are now on to our introduction of ordinances, and I'll yield to the city attorney.
Thank you, Mayor. We're at item 1201. 1201 is the introduction of ordinance number 16-0-3. It's a proposed amendment to the city charter and ordinances relating to the change of the date of, of the annual reorganization of City Commission. First and only public hearing is scheduled for February 24, 2016. Like that deemed to be admitted. On item number 1202, it's the introduction of ordinance number 16-Z-01. It's proposed addition of property to the local registry of historic places, and amendment of the official zoning map to change the zoning classification from Reservation Preservation 2, zoning district to the Reservation Residential Preservation 2 zoning district with Historic Preservation Overlays, HPO. The public hearing is scheduled for February 24, 2016. And finally, item number 1203 is introduction of ordinance 16-Z-02. Proposed amendment to the official zoning map to change the zoning classification from Office Residential 3 zoning district to the Parkway Village Plan Unit Development Zoning District. The public hearing for this ordinance is scheduled also for February 24. If we could have those three ordinances deemed to be introduced.
Great, please consider those three items introduced. Mr. Manager, we're now on to policy formation, item 13.01.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item 13.01 is the discussion of proposed purchase of 65, 650 West Gaines Street. The Madison Street-Gaines Street Supplemental Stormwater Outfall Project requires a perpetual drainage and a temporary construction easement from a parcel owned by 650 West Gaines Street LLC. The parcel is located at 650 West Gaines Street, and is one of the few remaining vacant properties on Gaines Street. The property owner has indicated that eminent domain would be required in order for the city to acquire the necessary easements. The eminent domain process could potentially raise the cost of the acquisition to approximately $1 million. However, the property owner has offered to sell the entire one-plus-acre parcel to the city at the recently appraised value of the entirety for the lot of $1.4 million. The Real Estate Committee voted to approve the purchase on January 26, 2016. This agenda item seeks your approval to move forward with the purchase of the property at a total cost of $1,418,959.73. Judy Donahoe is available to answer any questions.
Any questions, or is there a motion?
So moved.
There's a motion and a second. Comment by Commissioner Medics.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This gave me pause, the amount of money that was involved for the parcel. The, the only reason I will support it, for the reasons that the manager just put forth, the amount of money that are required to get the easement, and we really have no other choice.
Great. There are no other comments. Commissioners, all those in favor, let it be known by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, no. Motion passes unanimously. Mr. Manager, item 13.02.
13.02 is the Economic Development Council dissolution. Annually, the city and the Economic Development Council enter into a contractual arrangement approved by the City Commission to identify the scope of work and services funded with the city's contribution. The city has funded the EDC at $130,000 for years, $115,000 during the economic downturn, and most recently was in discussion for an increase by $44,500. On January 14 of this year, the Greater Tallahassee Chamber of Commerce Board voted to end the relationship with the EDC. Subsequently, on January 18, 2016, the Executive Board of the EDC voted to dissolve the organization with a final vote by the entire board on January 28, 2016. This agenda item seeks your approval to de-obligate the unused portion of fiscal year 2016 funds earmarked for the EDC. We understand that the EDC may have sufficient funds to meet its final obligations. Remaining funds will be returned to the general fund. Robert Wigan is here to respond to any questions that you may have on this item.
I'll move staff recommendation, option one.
Second.
There's a motion and a second for staff recommendation. All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, no. Motion passes unanimously. Item 13.03.
Item 13.03 seeks your authorization for the city manager to negotiate and execute an agreement with Leon County to facilitate the construction of new sewers to serve the Woodside Heights neighborhood. Woodside Heights is located outside of the city limits, northeast of the intersection of Woodville Highway and Capital Circle Southeast. This area is located within the primary protection zone for Wakulla Springs. We will not be providing, the city will not be providing any funding for construction of this project. Leon County will pay for the sewer system and transfer it to the city for ownership and operation. The system will be built to city specs. The proposed agreement will define the responsibilities of both the city and county as the project moves forward. John Bus is the project manager and is here to answer any questions.
I'll move option one.
There's a motion for option one?
Second.
Is there a second? There's a second. All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, no. Motion passes unanimously. Commissioner's item 13.04 has been rescheduled to February 24 meeting. We're on to item 13.05.
13.05, Mayor and Commissioners, seeks your permission to seek the designation to be a tech hire community, and also submit an application for grant funding to support tech hire initiatives. The tech hire designation would provide the city with the opportunity to tap into resources to promote tech hire concepts in Tallahassee. The U.S. Department of Labor has identified $100 million in grant funding for these efforts. The grants will range from $2 million to $5 million. There are no matching fund requirements. However, at least a 25% match is recommended. If successful with our application, Tallahassee would be the first city in Florida to receive the tech hire community designation. Raul Lavin is the project, is the project manager and is here to answer any questions.
Questions, Commissioners? Questions?
Move approval.
Second.
There's a motion and a second for approval. All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, no. Motion passes unanimously. We're now on to un-agenda speakers. Treasurer Clerk, are there any?
There is one speaker, Mayor, that is Stanley Sims. I'll ask him to provide his name and address for the record, and if there are others present who wish to speak, they can bring me a speaker form that should be found on the back table.
Good afternoon, Mayor. My name is Stanley Sims. I'm at 1320 Avondale Way. I am in a very peculiar situation right now. I've been in this community over 20 years, and I've always had an avenue to resolve when I have issues of concerns. And you dealing with me, and all of you, Scott, have been here. I often have issues of concerns, but I've always had the ability to work behind the scenes. In the last month, I thought Trump was building a wall around Mexico, but somebody built a wall around the City of Tallahassee office. I had to call the city manager's office and use an alias in order to speak to his assistant. And that was devastating for me. And what really broke me down even more, she asked me the question, why did I use an alias? And I answered her question and told her that I had been trying several times, but never got a return call. And I asked her, would you answer my question? Why does a taxpaying citizen has to use an alias in order to talk to you? And then, I had a meeting, and I'm real scared now, so I've asked people to really pray for me, because I had a meeting with Reese, and he said something to me, Mayor, that really was very insulting, but I'm trying to see Jesus. So, I walked on out of his office, and he's a little man with a big stick. And I've got some concerns. One, people, the morale now, let's talk about this. Commissioner Miller, the way Michelle was terminated was sad. Facebook is lighting up about how this woman has spent 19 years helping me log on, helping Earth Man, talking to people, carrying your agenda, whether she believed in it or not. And to have her stuff personally packed and escorted out the building like she was a criminal, I think that is deplorable. It has sent a shockwave of fear through city government. People are scared, people are nervous, and there's a fear that round two is next. They're saying Star Metro, look out. They're saying IT, look out, you're next. They're saying, they're putting people on guard. Folks can't even talk to, because they don't want to make sure they ain't talking to the wrong people. Here's something that I want, that another point that I want to share. salaries inequity. This is what they're complaining about. An administrative assistant that works for an individual that makes over $120,000, but just may not be on the Goodie Boy Network.
Excuse me, your time's expired.
Mayor, may you extend me, since we don't have that many? Give me two minutes.
Gotcha.
Coming to a close, and those are preacher minutes.
We're going with the choir minutes, go ahead.
Making $30,000, but you can go across the hall, and the same administrative assistant is making $60,000, because she's in the crew. Scott, and I don't mean that disrespectful, I view you as a friend. It's three things that you have always been consistent on, on all of your tenure, on this here dais. You love old folks. You stood up for that man when you caught all kind of, excuse my expression, hell, but you let that man sell his peaches. Law enforcement and veterans. I have a young man that I want you to talk to, who is a veteran, and I want him to explain to you the horror story that he went through trying to gain employment with the City of Tallahassee. Commissioner Miller, city manager, we all have children, we love our children, we want the best for our children. Curtis, I think the City of Tallahassee is the number one employer in Tallahassee. I wouldn't send him to Rick Scott for nothing. I want him to work for Rick Fernandez. But the way he was treated, and the way this, that Michelle was treated after 19 years, has killed the morale in, in, in here.
Thank you, Mr. Sims.
I was threatened not to come here. Someone called me last night, Mayor, with a block call, and told me not to come to this meeting, that I would be exercised, ostracized, sorry. But I'll take that risk. And I pray that the city manager will honor my request and meet with me like I've asked to be. Thank you.
Well, Mr. Sims, you've said a lot, but I'll, I will say, and I think you know this, you've plenty of times exercised your ability to come here, and I don't know about this call or where it may have come from, but always know that, that you're welcome, obviously, to this chamber, to state whatever grievance you might have.
And I solicit your prayers for me and my family.
Indeed. Thank you for your time. Are there any other, any other speakers?
No other speakers, Mayor.
There appear to be no other speakers this evening. We're now on to City Commission, information and sharing of ideas.
Something to say? Do you have something?
Yes. We, I've been here six, over six years, and if there are any issues within our government, I hope anybody that worked for the City of Tallahassee will, will speak up, and if it needs to be done through, you know, confidential channels, they know how to do that. We have a government that is focused on delivering good services for the city residents, and if we're doing something wrong, we want to know that. I appreciate, Stanley, you coming and bringing to our attention the issues we have, but I would hope if anybody has a specific issue they have to bring it forward, because if there's a problem, we want to take care of it. Mr. Mayor, I want to just briefly make a comment, and then it's a request, and it has to do with community schools, because I know we've been talking a lot about it, community schools, and Superintendent Pons had an event, I want to say it was Monday, I wasn't invited, but it was Monday, at Rickards High School, and I applaud his efforts to try to bring health care and some of the other efforts that he's going to be trying to, trying to bring there. I did attend a meeting last week where it was first discussed, and he presented his concepts, and I have some concerns, because the presentation that was made to us wasn't terribly, let's just say, complete. And so, there were, I know comments made at his press conference where he's going to be bringing certain things to Rickards, and I want to make sure that he does that. I'm fairly certain, since you participated in that, he probably made commitments. Let's make sure that he does those. In the meanwhile, I just wanted to let everybody know, we're going to continue, at least I'm going to continue, to move down this road of trying to do something at Weston or another location down there, because I firmly believe, as you do, early learning, early learning is where it starts, going into those early grades as well. And, and I do want to mention, because I'm going to ask if it's okay, at one of our future commission meetings, if this means a charter school, we may want to try to attract either someone that can deliver it in a charter school situation, or by state law, municipality can start a charter school. It is in statute that we can do that. So, I want to make sure that we do the right thing for the young people down there. There were 500 kids that are in the age that we've been talking about delivering for that area, that now we're on, it's going to be a different situation for them at Rickards. So, I'd like to continue to talk about this. I am going to ask if we can have a brief presentation on charter schools, and I'm going to ask you, Mr. Mayor, if you could stay on the superintendent to make sure he follows through, because we need to make sure those things happen down.
Yeah, I appreciate, I appreciate that, Commissioner. I, I was invited to participate in the announcement, which I think all of us agree, if we can get health services into a part of our community, and then to deliver to a customer that has, based off the numbers, have had a difficult time accessing health care, that we ought to do that. I did also suggest that the invite be sent to the entire commission to participate, and I wish that that had been done. I wasn't aware that it hadn't. Number two, I also reemphasized to the superintendent and did so publicly in my comments at the event. My strong, strong hope that they stay committed with the city and with your efforts around a community, the community school concept, emphasizing intervention at the earliest possible point in our children's development. While I think it's fantastic, obviously, to have this service co-located at a high school, the intention, obviously, is to be accessible to all folks who live in the area, but also principally for the students who attend, who attend Rickards. And I think that's a good, I think it's a good program and a good model. I see it wholly separate from what we have said and the commitment that I think many of us have championed with regard to an emphasis on early childhood education and support. In response to those comments, the superintendent did indicate a full commitment to want to pursue that, and so, I, I fully believe that our line of communication there, one, has to stay open, but two, that we ought to move assiduously toward bringing these things in for a landing. So, we're in agreement on that.
I could, on point, Mr. Mayor. I'm glad to hear that. First of all, Commissioner Ziffer, I'm glad that we started the conversation on community schools, because I don't think we would have had health care at Rickards if we hadn't have started that conversation. I'm, I think it's fantastic to have neighborhood health services providing health care at Rickards, but a, a health clinic is only one part of a community school, so lest those are, that are watching, forget that. It, a community school does so much more. It involves the neighborhood with the school. It also, we're talking about early education, but there, there are all kind of other factors that are dealt with other than health care. As to the charter school, I'd be glad to have that conversation. I believe the first charter school in Florida was the City of Pembroke Pines. If it was not the first, it was very If it was not the first, it was very close to the first.
Charter school here was.
Well, Bethel, right. And I, I was on the original board for Bethel here, but I, I mean, the city of Pembroke Pines was extreme, extremely close to, you know, would have been in the first handful, and it was done by the city there. Hopefully, we won't have to take that route, but I, I'm excited about the opportunities for South City around a fully inclusive community school.
Thank you.
Great. The one thing I did want to point out, and I'm not sure what had been publicly covered on this and what hadn't, but Neighborhood Health, what we previously knew as Neighborhood Health Services is now a Neighborhood Health Center, because they received a federal qualification for the provision of health services. That designation previously only existed at Bond. It now exists at both Neighborhood Health as well as Bond. So part of that, part of the Rickards announcement was them setting up shop in compliance with their federal mandate and the $5 million that they received to do the provision of those services closer to the customer. So their previous location being, having been a bit of a challenge, that's not to negate anything, that's just to provide some clarity on, I think, why Neighborhood Health Center, we haven't had to deal with that before, because we aren't, you know, as a city, we don't do health, if you will. That has previously been a county discussion. This, this now extends, I think, and overlays into several conversations we've been having, both on Prama Zone, the wraparound services through our educational system, and all of the efforts that we just discussed, what was that, two weeks ago during our planning meeting on South Side.
I, I think it's great that, by concept, the superintendent is following through on what we did start. But the community school concept is such that those services are a part of the very fabric of the school.
Absolutely.
And unless you incorporate that in its entirety in the school, and here's a very big issue, and make a very, very long-term commitment, as in 20 years or so, it, it doesn't have the same power that it has as if you follow the, the model. So having said that, if Rickards, in its name, is going to be moving to a brand-new facility, and even though they're now talking about potentially Fairview being there, you're basically disrupting the whole concept. And so from a community school standpoint, we still need to try to do what we're trying to do, and I am so pleased that health care is going to be so much closer to the people that need it. Typically, unfortunately, we tend to have, not in health care in this situation, but other things that, that can serve the needs of some folks, but they're not located anywhere near it. And so I, I applaud him for doing this, but I just think from the community school standpoint, we can do better.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, I wanted to add also to that conversation my support for our continuing on our path, because having met the folks from Paramore at the All American Cities event, they had quite a lot to say about Evans High School and what they had, what elements they had incorporated, one of which was a 25-year commitment and contract with the University of Central Florida to provide certain services also. They had done a great deal to, to basically ensure the sustainability of the effort, and I think that, given their success rate, Commissioner Ziffer and Commissioner Maddox had already started down the road of trying to basically mirror that, that model, and I'm completely supportive of trying to do that, because they have succeeded.
Yes.
And if there's anything we'd like to see here, it's some success.
Here, here.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Having served on the school board for a number of years, you know, this was, this, this is not a new issue. The reason that Rickards has an almost $4 million facility that they could just move immediately into is because during Governor Childs' administration, we started what were called school-based health clinics, and Rickards benefited from that, the first being established at what was Shank's High School in Quincy. Rickards was one of the schools that got funding for the school-based health clinic. It was primarily for teenage mothers, who, if they wanted to continue their education, they could have their child on campus and have interaction with that child and not have to worry about babysitting and such. But when the funding from the legislature disappeared, of course, when it wasn't fashionable anymore, you know, Rickards was left with a building that's been underutilized since that time. I think their Health Science Academy is located in that building. You know, there, there, there will be a lot of issues to address in, in placing a community school at, at the old Wesson School, Commissioner Ziffer. It's not an immediate decision that can be made. There will be lots of infrastructure improvements that have to be made at that school. It hasn't been used as a school, other than the preschool that they offer there now for 10, 15 years. And so a lot of infrastructure improvement was, improvements will have to be made, remodeling, renovations, there's going to have to be rezoning to repopulate that school. And so there are lots of issues that have to be worked through to make that happen. Is a community school something that's needed in our community? Certainly. I, I agree with you there, but I don't know that it's something that can, that will happen overnight, and certainly we, we don't want to be at odds with our school district. We've got to be a partner with them in order to make this happen, because regardless of what we do or say, the superintendent and school board will be responsible for making this happen and the oversight of that facility. So I, I think it would, it, it would be, it would be our, in our best interest, not to get at odds with the school district, but to continue to work with them as a partner to make this happen, them and the community, to make this happen.
I, I just, please, a couple of points. I agree totally. But having said that, there, there seems to be, at best, a lukewarm acceptance of what we're trying to do. And if, if that's the case, then, then they just need to tell us now, we're not going to do this. So, so we're at that point where I think we want to have a better message from them, keep doing this. The other part of that is, is, and you weren't aware of these conversations, is we're going to be gradually moving into this. That's, that's what the conversation's been, I've had that conversation with the superintendent, was it was going to be the early learning, and then a grade would be added each year. In other words, it would go through pre-VPK, and then kindergarten, first, second, and maybe third. So that those zoning issues could be done a little bit more over time, because we didn't want to all of a sudden remove a lot of children from one school and then create issues there. This is important, because we're talking about not only children's future, but a community's future. And yes, I want to walk carefully, I don't want to make promises that can't be met, but on the other hand, this is important, and I would like to do whatever I can to help move this cause forward.
I, I, I didn't get the sense that, you've been in more meetings with the district on this than I have, actually, we haven't been in any on, on this conversation, with the exception of the early learning piece, which there've been some longstanding talks with these superintendent's office and his staff. But I didn't get the sense that there was a departure from the commitment toward the community school and the option to then go the Rickards route. So that's why I'm having a hard time connecting the two, because in my mind, they're both needed, and one happens to be, there happens to be a center for, and, and the Hollyfield family was there, being that that center is named for their mother, who was a major health advocate. And so, you know, that was sort of taking, you know, taking shape and taking flight. It was absolutely, it was, Commissioner Ziffer, your leadership on this and your comment that basically said, you know, it's imperative that we move in lockstep with our school district. And I think it's going to be important that we, you know, continue that commitment. One, they're a taxing authority, and there are resources that exist there. Two, I do think if they haven't gotten the picture, they should get the picture, that this funneling system, this very early point of funneling, when you've got the Secretary of Education for the state saying that half of the kids in Florida are showing up at kindergarten, not kindergarten-ready, this is, you know, there's an, there's an imperative there, and I, and I hope it's one that they get. I can't speak for them, but I got the sense that that's the case. So I, I would, I would say we all ought to be undeterred in our, our emphasis to mature, our, our plan on this, and hopefully move it forward. I, I recognize that there are sensitivities, just given the politics of this stuff, and that's, you know, I don't want to get political, but we have to acknowledge that there are some tensions here that are, that are complicating our ability to move as quickly ahead on this as we would like. So to the extent that we can tamp it down and keep them at the table and move this thing forward as a collective, a community collective, I think that's the best alternative, you know, that, not the best alternative, the best plan for moving forward. Anything else on this topic? Other sharing of ideas, Commissioner Maddox?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Today, we had a press conference asking the community to pledge their support to the Get Blue campaign, to help us attract JetBlue to fly a low-cost carrier to fly from Tallahassee to Fort Lauderdale and Fort Lauderdale to Tallahassee. Our institutions of higher learning have been instrumental in this process, Florida A&amp;M University, Tallahassee Community College, and Florida State University, as well as the Tallahassee Chamber of Commerce, the Downtown Improvement Authority, Visit Florida, Lamar Advertising. Senator Mumford has been helpful in the legislature. I want to think, I think at least two of my colleagues have filled out these, Commissioner Miller and Ziffer, and Representative Valen Williams as well. And so I wanted to ask that all of us fill them out and make the pledge, if possible. And today, Florida State University committed to $1 million. They pledged $1 million. So that, I thought that was tremendous. So our numbers are now at $1,476,900. So we are just under $1.5 million in pledges to fly JetBlue. Where our goal is to get to $2 million, and to present that to JetBlue and hopefully bring a low-cost carrier to the airport to serve an area that is underserved. So any help that y'all can give on pledges or passing them out would be greatly appreciated.
Awesome. Thank you. Other sharing of idea items?
Not a sharing of idea, Mayor, but we did have one other citizen who wished to speak. If you'd like to take him at this time.
Okay. Commissioner Miller, and then we'll.
Well, my sharing of idea probably has to do with our speaker. I just wanted to invite everybody to come down to the Amtrak station next Friday, the 19th, at 2:30 to about 3:30 to greet the train. Several of us will be on the train, coming in and, and disembarking here at Tallahassee. It's an inspection run, and people all the way up to the very top of Amtrak will be there, and a lot of elected officials from stranded cities all over the Panhandle. So it should be a really nice time, and with that, I'll yield the floor to the speaker, who probably will add more information.
Great. Commissioner Miller is correct. Bart Bibler on the Amtrak restoration.
Thanks very much. Yeah, very exciting day coming up, a week from Friday. First off, at the train station, the inspection tour is going to come through. As I understand it, they're going to arrive about 2:30, and the city's event begins at 2 o'clock. So you want to get there early, because I think it will be crowded, and that's going to last about an hour. And as Commissioner Miller said, as I understand, so far, the two, two governors are coming, several Congress folks are coming. This is getting bigger and getting more support. I think what may be turning the tide is people understanding this isn't a commitment to a certain way to fund the Amtrak. This is commitment that we want to restore Amtrak, and we want it at a daily service, and we want it at an appropriate type schedule for every station. So it's different than it was before, and this isn't a decision that it's publicly funded, which got some people concerned. This is a, a commitment to looking at it and creating a report through a working group by the end of this year, and then Congress has to act on it next year. And so it really deserves everybody's support, because why not? Let's look at the whole big picture, the economic development benefits, let's all come out and support that we want the train. Then I was asked by the city to get letters of business support and citizen report, support. So letters of support should go to an address that's been created, an email address, which is amtrak@talgov.com. So all letters of support will go to that email. The city can then print them out, or put them on the website, or count them, whatever, for the arrival of Amtrak. The Amtrak tour will, of course, include Chairman of Amtrak, Joe Boardman, and what's called the Southern Rail Commission, which is the three sister states, Louisiana, Mississippi, Alabama, that have been working this issue. So it's a very big deal. It's going to happen Feb. 18 and 19, first day, Feb. 18. It'll get to Pensacola from New Orleans, second day, it'll get from Pensacola to Jacksonville. It'll stop here about 2:30. So in view of being asked to get community support, to me, that means let's have a party. So I've got the biggest party coming up, which is, after the event, walk around Railroad Square. It's going to be held at Proof Brewery, got the Best Zydeco Band from New Orleans, Dwayne Dopsy and the Zydeco Hellraisers. We're going to have food trucks. Kids can come, they'll just get, adults will be banded, and it's free, all of it's free. So, and that will run until about 6 o'clock. So take the afternoon, Friday, February 19, go to the train station, show your support. My understanding that maybe the FSU cheerleaders will be there, the FAMU 100 band will be there. This is going to be a very big deal, and it needs to be. We're known for having the most show of support on the whole route, and we better show it that we're going to be right there. Thanks a lot.
Great. Thank you very much. Commissioner?
Well, I wanted to thank you, Mr. Bibler, for bringing up the, the governors, because as he referenced the last time he was here, we went to Mobile at the behest of the mayor of Mobile, and I can tell you that the governments in Louisiana, Mississippi, and Alabama are so completely on board of this effort. Interestingly enough, you know, they're west of Mobile, and it really, the mayor's interest was trying to get service east of Mobile. So they are all in.
That's great. Fantastic. Thank you for your work. And just by way of an update, we did receive letters of support from our Florida and congressional delegation for the appointment of former Mayor Marx to serve on, on the committee that was created in this last budget, congressional budget.
We have, I'm not sure who else is going. I know I'm going, the Florida League of Cities has a fly-in going to Washington the beginning of March, so if there's any people I could specifically see?
Yeah, yeah. Actually, thank you for mentioning that, for sure. Other sharing of idea items?
We have one more speaker.
All right.
Tom Thebow.
Mr. Thebow here?
He is.
He is. He's in the center section. Coming forward now.
Now, a little bit. You know, folks, I, I mentioned before, in a couple of the meetings that I've had, I've been, been at, the path that I've been walking for 25 years, okay, I've taken on the fire, I've taken on the path. It's not to fight it, it's to put it in its place, and I've gained that knowledge. I know how to separate that conflict, and there's, there's a reason for the fire, is to destroy that which is not harmonious to life, so that that which is harmonious to life can be perfect harmony, in perfect harmony. Okay? I want to make it happen, you know, and, I mean, there's no other, there's, there's no other, nothing else worth, worth fighting for, worth working towards, if you aren't going to work for paradise to become perfect in the body. You know, we've got an absolute perfect system here, the system of life. Fast Adams, everybody, so y'all are in, in these seats because you want to try to get the community in a... get the community in a better way, you know, get people better. My proposal is we need everybody healthy, quick. In two, in two, two growing seasons, you'd have higher-quality organic food, huge amounts of it, everywhere, lots of jobs for everybody. All these, all these companies that are using chemical fertilizer and non-organic stuff, low-grade, those people, those businesses are the ones that will run it, and they have other people take care of their plots all over town. City won't have to take care of, none of the grass areas now. All of it will be plotted off to businesses, growing organic quality stuff, using all the waste of food that we throw in the garbage right now, making disease, infection, viruses, and bacteria and stuff in the, in the dump sites. You can cut down all, all the trash, recycling centers in, no garbage food in now. All of the food go to compost mixing, or mixing stations, where it mixes and extracts methane, heats it, purifies, cools it, liquefies it, stores the liquefied methane in high-pressure zones, you use it as fuel. And afterwards, you got super-high nutrient fertilizer, super-high nutrient fertilizer, organic quality, right? Why aren't we doing this stuff? You know, the National Geographic said back in the 70s, we should be doing this stuff, and we still aren't. And my proposal, we get it all done. Why don't you get somebody to work with it? Please. Okay? I, I, I'm tired of, I'm tired of people, you know, not respecting their brain and their ability to respect the facts of what are, and work with those factors to achieve what we can achieve, okay? I need to sit down with somebody to talk some facts and make some things happen. I really need some help getting those things done. I would like that.
Thank you very much. As you're exiting Rees, will you... Rees Code, used to be without utility, ACM, he can connect with you, I appreciate it. Are there any additional speakers?
No speakers, Mayor.
Any other comments from commissioners? Saying no, we stand in adjournment.